If you'd be kind enough to do the roll call.
Mr. Livingston?
Here.
Mr. Nath?
Here.
Mr. Declois? He called in that he won't be able to attend. Mr. Lennon? Looks like he's running late. Mr. Maroli?
Here.
Mr. Tolmer?
Here.
Okay. Um, take a motion to adopt minutes from September 28th, 2020 meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, Justin made the motion. I didn't.
No, I'll make, I'll motion to.
I did. Okay, any discussion, corrections, comments?
No.
Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor of adopting the minutes, signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, minutes are adopted. Um, new business. Um, the long-term flood mitigation plan for McLaughlin Run presented by the Borough Engineer. Um, I guess what I'd like to do is, is have him do his presentation, then we'll open it up for questions amongst the, the council and, and planning commissioners. Um, and once we've had that discussion, then we can open it up for questions from the public, I guess. Okay, John? Take it away.
Okay, can, can everyone see my screen now?
Uh, John, I think I gotta stop sharing my screens. I'm gonna stop sharing and then you take over.
Okay.
All right, it's all you, John.
Let's try this again. How about now?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, so for those who don't know me, my name is John Heil. I am, I'm with Lennon Smith Solar Engineering. I've also, I grew up in Scott Township and a lot of you probably saw me running around, um, Bridgeville years ago. Um, a long time ago, but, uh, uh, so after the flooding in the past, the past few years, and especially seventeen, eighteen and the tragedies that we had. The, um, Army Corps of Engineers did a, uh, did a study. Um, they released it January of last year. And, um, basically the study did, it, it, it studied, um, McLaughlin Run produced a, um, a hydraulic model through heck, through the HECCRAS program. And they, and they analyzed a few, um, scenarios to, uh, you're getting the wrong button here, I'm sorry, uh, of what can be done to help mitigate some of the flooding. So this, what's on the screen now is the, the study area that they, they looked at. And they looked at not only McLaughlin Run all the way up through the borough. They also looked at and included in the model, a portion of the Chartres Creek back channel. Cause the back channel has significant impact on what happens in McLaughlin Run. Um, and I'll explain it a little further here in a few minutes. So, got a couple of things, a couple of scenarios that they came, came up with, with their all, with their alternatives and their conclusion was, one was just a straight structural buyout. Yeah, they proposed to buy, uh, sixteen, sixteen properties. And then, okay, sixteen properties are no longer being flooded, basically, because Borough would own them, tear them down, and that'd just be, uh, open land. Option two, um, was dredging the channel all the way up through. Um, this, this, and their model indicated this was going to solve twenty, um, flooding on twenty-four structures. Not all of them, but twenty-four structures. They looked at a detention basin up at McLaughlin Run Park. The, the model indicated, uh, twenty structures, um, not flooding. Um, not sure if I really agreed with that result, but it's what their model showed. A couple of other things they looked at was, um, Bauer Hill Road, bridge modifications. Um, it doesn't show, in the model, it doesn't show any impacts. But as we all know, with that center pier there, something gets jammed in there and gets caught up by that center pier. It causes significant flooding upstream. But the models don't, um, analyze, um, blocking a, a bridge opening with a car or dumpster or anything. It assumes just, it, it assumes free flow and what the actual structure does itself, how it obstructs the stream. And then the last thing they looked at was, um, commercial street bridge replacement, which they, they indicated it would have four, um, structures, not flooded. So, just doing that. So, we, we, we took a little bit of a different approach at it. Uh, we reviewed all the scenarios that the Corps came up with. I dug into the model, um, very deeply. Did a little bit of preliminary, um, ransom scenarios, some off-the-wall scenarios, just to see what would happen. Some realistic scenarios and, and was paying attention to what the back channel of Chartres Creek did to impact the, uh, stream. What McLaughlin Run itself, how it impacts the stream, and how the different bridges and stuff impact the stream. So I truly understood what was going on before we came up with any alternative scenarios that we were going to actually model. Um, we identified a critical restriction points and, um, within the stream and then, um, and then I, and then obviously I spoke with, uh, the Borough staff, um, Public Works, a number of, um, council members and stuff. We went around, we actually walked, walked the, uh, McLaughlin Run corridor and looked at a few of the critical areas. So some of the options that we looked at were construction, earth and levees to, um, keep the water within the stream and no longer flood the, the structures. Structural levees. Bridge removal and replacements, um, Bauer Hill Road Bridge, um, Baldwin Street Bridge, um, commercial street culverts. We also looked at, like I said, some, some, um, some, uh, some, um, more, I don't want to call them off-the-wall, but some, some scenarios that were a little different. Oh, um, we, we looked at a flood control tunnel. Sounds like a great idea, except when we start, when I, as soon as I started looking at it and I modeled one. It, it, it had some, it had some impacts that did improve. Obviously, there's some significant high cost there. But one of the biggest things I saw with that is when I started evaluating the mine maps and the structures that were above the, where this tunnel would have to go. The tunnel would actually be right at the plus or minus the elevation of the mine. So either the mine would be just above the tunnel or just below the tunnel, depending on what portion of that area you were cut, you're drilling through. So it became a non, a non-starter because the, the safety of the residents above it for, uh, mine collapse, as well as if, if, if the tunnel was sitting right on top of the mine and the mine roof collapsed, tunnel would collapse and then we'd have to start from scratch. So it became a non-starter. And I looked into the detention basin up in McLaughlin Run, a little bit more, uh, and, and just determine if there was a way to make that work where it would actually stop the flooding. And the size of that detention basin would be three times the size of the ball field area. Again, we don't have that much property, so that became pretty much a non-starter. But while we were doing all this, we were actually working with the Borough and we did a bunch of projects already. Got some projects implemented, some projects that are getting ready to start. We're actually going to have a meeting, two meetings tomorrow to kick off two projects. Um, so, but if that, the, um, the, the restrictions that we truly identified were problems were, obviously the Chartres Creek back channel is the first and foremost problem. If the water is not flowing through the back channel, when the water from McLaughlin Run comes and meets it, it's got nowhere to go. So, and the model shows that very well. If you, um, if you would, when you run the model, you'll see that the back channel has a huge effect all the way up and beyond Bauer Hill Road. If you were to completely eliminate Chartres Creek, the water surface elevation in McLaughlin Run would drop exponentially, but obviously we can't eliminate the flow from the back channel.
Hey, John, it's Tim. Can I ask you a question really quickly? Cause I think it's important to the context here. When you say ran the model or we would need three times the size of the existing, what's the, are you assuming it's a, like, is the one hundred year event the input there? Was it?
Yes.
Like, what? Okay.
Yes. Uh, I'm sorry, I was going to get to that here shortly, but yeah.
No problem.
The hundred-year model is what we're, we're looking at. Two, twenty-five, fifty, we can, we, we can run those, we can see what they do. I was, I wanted to make, use the hundred-year model, that is your, I don't want to call it the largest storm event, obviously, there are bigger ones, but that one percent storm, storm event is, that's the one that everyone worries about. That's the one that causes all the damage. So that's the one we, we focused on, on this. Um, so the commercial street culvert, you can see the photo here of, of the culvert, and this is what it looked like before we started. The significant, uh, impact to the access to the one culvert. So the first one, the first things we did was we got a permit, um, for the Borough to be able to maintain that culvert moving forward. So whenever sediment starts accumulating in there, or all the Borough needs to do is call DP, hey, we're going to do some additional maintenance on this culvert per the permit we have in place. They've already done that once. They cleaned it out. It, it is, it is really flowing well now. Public Works did a great job cleaning that out. Um, the next obstruction restriction we saw was obviously the, um, center column and Bauer Hill Road Bridge. This, this, that's the other photo here. That center column really needs to be eliminated to allow the water to properly flow through here. Cause this is, this is the area that catches a lot of the debris. It gets hung up there and then once that's hung up, everything upstream gets backed up. Um, Baldwin Street Bridge is actually another real significant restriction. It's very narrow. It's not, it needs to be opened up and widened, widened some so that the water can flow through there. Because of its, because of that restriction, the water upstream of it, it, it backs up, um, significantly by three feet above the bridge deck. Obviously, what that means is all the water's going to go around the bridge, down Baldwin Street, flood all of Baldwin Street and, and then fill up there until it can get back into the stream down at Janeway. Um, then we also had topographic limitations here. And obviously we, the Borough is pretty much fully developed in this corridor. Um, don't have a lot of room to move, don't a lot, have a lot of room to truly widen the stream and create a, um, more natural stream corridor thought, significant impacts to the community, i.e., um, the elimination of properties. Which means that's less tax revenue. There's, there's all those implications to it, plus the well, the cost of acquiring all those properties. So those are a lot of the restrictions that we had. And then these are the, um, the, the progress to date. I mentioned the commercial street. Another project we just finished was, uh, Maple Street Wall. Uh, one of the first things we did when we were going around is we saw center of that wall had a, it wasn't a nice uniform sweep through there and it was maybe with some, with some old gabion baskets that were starting to fail. And there was this basically obstruction halfway around this, this bend you can see in the photo. And it, uh, it created a hydraulic problem in this area. As well as the, the wall was probably, it was about twelve inches shorter than it should have been. So what we, so what the project was, which was just finished, is we removed that center section, pushed it towards the houses a little bit to get that nice uniform bend through there. Eliminated all the obstruction below the, right at the base of the wall. And then put, put a concrete cap on top of the wall to raise that elevation so that, that cap is at the same elevation as the arctic berm across this creek there. And in that area, the hundred-year flood, it stays within those, in those constraints. To an extent in the fact that, and we'll get to this in a little bit, the, the low end of the, of Maple Street, there's a ramp that Borough has to get down into the creek to do maintenance when the floods and everything gets locked up. So part of our, one of our, of our options is going to be to address that as well, so that water can't just back up that ramp and then back up onto Maple Street. That, whether eventually, whether it resolved with one of the options. But this, this, um, this improvement did have a good impact in this area. It actually lowered the water surface elevation, tenth to two-tenths of a foot, as well as eliminated the, the, the flooding coming around there. Mentioned the Chartres Creek back channel. We are currently working on a permit here. This pet photo is the one I just took of the sandbar that has formed at the confluence of McLaughlin Run and Chartres Creek, um, back channel. Entire back channel is completely filled. It's about three feet high above wa, normal water surface elevation. It's a substantial mine material that's blocking the proper flow of both creeks. So we're getting a, we're working on getting a permit right now to get that out of there and get these creeks flowing correctly. Once they start flowing correctly, that'll help downstream as well as upstream for both, because water will flow, velocity gets to where it needs to be. And it'll be self-cleaning is what we're trying to get it to do. Uh, we also have two projects that are out to, out to bid right now. Or actually out to construction, they, uh, we have pre-construction meetings tomorrow. Uh, we have McLaughlin Run Park Flood Control Project. This project's been going on for a long time. Um, previous engineers started the project. We took it over, finished it, got it approved. Got permits through DEP, um, the Conservation District. This is going to consist of constructing a trash rack in McLaughlin Run up at the park. Um, basically it's going to be five eighteen-inch diameter steel caissons that are going to be driven down into the ground. And they're going to be at an angle both to the flow of water and at a skew so that if something comes floating downstream from Upper St. Clair, say it's a dumpster, it's going to hit these, it's going to catch them there before it gets to any of the bridges. And it's going to be deflected into McLaughlin Run Park in the ball field area. Now, as part of this, we're going to lower the ball field area, make it a large floodplain area so it can detain water as well as capture all this debris and hold it until the water subsides. Public Works can just roll right in there, grab that material and haul it away very easily without having it being wedged up underneath a, a bridge. The other project we're going to construction on tomorrow is, oops, I'm sorry, there we go, is, uh, Janeway, the Janeway Access Ramp. This is right there at that Bauer Hill Road Bridge. The problem here obviously is until we can get that bridge replaced, everything gets, uh, it's accumulates up against the center column and backs water up. Um, in the past, um, Public Works had to remove the dirt, remove the, um, concrete jumbo block wall it's constructed there so they can get a piece of equipment in there to clean it out. Obviously, that takes a larger piece of equipment than Borough has, so it's either a rental or we're going to hire someone to do that. So what we're going to do is, um, build a concrete ramp down into the stream. The, um, the jumbo block wall will remain, it'll be reconstructed, but it will remain. But in that section where the ramp is, we're putting a, um, removable, watertight, um, system. And the picture here shows what it looks like. These are basically fiberglass logs that seal together, they're watertight. They, they drop through a, a little, um, rack system. And Public Works can pick these out with a, um, with their, with their backhoe very easily. There's a nice little gadget they use to pick them up and pull them out. It, it'll keep the water in the creek when it floods, but then it allows us to get in there and get everything out of there that accumulates. Both McLaughlin Run Park and Janeway, uh, we received grants to do those projects, so those, and those projects came in within budget. So they're basically fully funded by the grants that we received, which is great for the Borough. Okay, bear with me here, it's jumping around on me. Uh, let's see here. Zoom slideshow. Previous. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. So, we spoke about the, the alternative options for consideration. The detention basin, um, adequate area wasn't available, so we kind of threw that one out. The tunnel, concerns with the mines, cost, and then the one other thing that I found in the model is Chartres Creek, the, the back channel, the elevation and how it floods actually would fill the channel, the tunnel. If McLaughlin Run could actually use a tunnel, so that was another problem we were having with it. It really wasn't getting the, uh, bang for the buck we were hoping for. Um, obviously the Bauer Hill Road Bridge, we definitely need to get that center column removed. Um, Baldwin Street Bridge, we need to either reconstruct or remove that so that that stream channel can open up there a little bit more and allow the water to pass through. Um, and then the commercial street culvert, after we, we evaluated, we got it cleaned out. The, um, I found that the railroad, um, bridge has probably is as much or if not more impact to the flow of the water than the, um, commercial street culvert does, just because of how, how low those, those I-beams are. They, they produce the headwaters before it even gets to the commercial street culvert. And since commercial street culvert is so close to them, they're literally flooding up against each other. Water doesn't have a chance to come back up before it gets to the culvert, so it's, it's really doing much to that other than keeping it clean. Um, isn't going to do a whole lot for, for the project. One thing we do want to remove, do eventually here is, and this is way down the road, won't be part of the, the flood control project, but something we need to do is we need to get the sanitary sewer out of the creek there. Uh, the manhole stick up all the way through that area. There are another, another debris catcher, obviously, and they are hindering flow to an extent. That's obviously going to take some work with Alka-Sand since it's their sewer and that'll be a whole nother conversation under, with a whole nother project. Uh, so we looked, we came up with three options that we, 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 we really considered, looked at the pricing, looked at the, what the model did. Option one, proposes improvements from the old skating rink all the way up to just past Baldwin Street Bridge. A little bit of work at Maple Street and then some improvements just upstream of Maple Street as well. Uh, what we did is we broke this into three phases. Phase one is from the, the skating rink to commercial street. Phase two is basically from commercial street, Bauer Hill Road, up to Baldwin Street. Then phase three is from Maple Street up to the end of the proposed improvements. So, so for option one, and actually for all three options, phase one of this project is the same. Uh, we actually met with the DEP on this phase of the project already. They're on board with this phase. And what we found was, um, the commercial street side of the, um, street, stream there is above the hundred, the hundred-year flood elevation. It doesn't flood. Obviously, aside with the Borough building, everything that in the skating rink, that all floods when the waters come up. But we don't have a whole lot of room to work there because all the buildings were constructed right along the stream. Bowling alley, skating rink, and a number of those industrial, industrial buildings there, they're all right up against the stream. So we didn't have a whole lot of room to work with, but we did have some. So what we came up with, um, was to construct a soldier beam and lagging levy wall. Just north of the roller rink, all the way up to commercial street, about eleven hundred feet. We're going to do a little bit of, uh, storm sewer relocation, and I'll show you this in a pic, in a, in a rendering here in a few minutes. And then we're going to install two, two screw pumps to, um, keep the, pump the water out from behind the levy once the, uh, for the water to falls from the sky, and I'll explain that a little bit more here in a second as well. And, um, this resolves all the flooding of properties along Carroll Avenue. So basically, everyone from commercial street down to skating rink should not experience any more flooding unless it's localized flooding for something other than the stream coming up. Now, the cost for phase one of this is three point nine million dollars. Um, so here's a, here's a, here's a rendering of that area. There, here's the, uh, soldier beam and lagging wall. And as part of this, this green area is actually, we're creating a floodplain area below the wall. So right now, if you go down there, it's a two-to-one, the one-to-one slope from the edge of, edge of water, straight up to the top. What we're doing is we're going to cut straight down for the soldier beam and lagging wall and then build a shelf there that's anywhere from five to ten to fifteen feet wide. That's going to be planted with, um, natural stream buffer plantings. And gives you a larger floodplain and, um, hydraulically, this, this section of the, um, project actually has a beneficial impact upstream even, more than we, more than we even anticipated. But like I said, with doing this, all these buildings here, uh, will, um, typically will not experience any flooding unless there's localized flooding. Now, to the localized flooding, when we do this, there's two storm sources, one outfall, there's one right here and there's one right here. Actually, there's three, I'm sorry. There is one right here, we're getting rid of. We're going to eliminate this outfall. We're going to reroute this storm sewer down to here. We're going to put tide flex anti-flow, um, or anti-backflow devices on each of these outfalls. So when, as the stream comes up, the water's not going to be able to come back up into the storm system and bubble up through the inlets and flood this area that way. Problem with doing that, as it's raining and all this area is collecting water, there's nowhere for this water to go. So in order to get that back into the stream, we're going to put, um, screw pumps. We're going to put a screw pump in this area here, screw pump in this area here. They'll have generators with them so that if power goes out, they, they can still run. And I have a picture of what the screw pump looks like. One second here. Not sure where it went. I'll show it to you here shortly. So here's a blow up of that area. So here's the bowling alley. Um, there's a storm sewer that comes right down between the bowling alley and this industrial building here. Um, and then there's another storm sewer that comes down through over here. We're going to intercept that, bring it across the back here, tie it in. Here's our screw pump, here's our generator. During normal events, this water's just going to flow straight through the storm sewer into the stream. When the stream comes up above that pipe, the screw pumps will kick on, pump the water basically up over top of the wall. There's what a screw pump basically looks like. Um, it moves a lot of water very quickly. Um, we'll have a structure at the bottom there, the manhole deep, screw pump will come down into it and just, it just turns. And the blades just pick the water up and it'll just push it over the top of the wall. Um, we'll typically do this, we'll push this into another little structure that has a, a pipe outlet that sticks outside, out the wall. For, for levy purposes, these, this wall is going to sit about three feet above the hundred-year flood elevation at the requirement of FEMA. So once we get this all done and constructed, we can actually go submit a LOMAR, a letter of map revision to FEMA and remove all these properties from the, from the, from the flood, um, impacted condition. Their insurance goes, their flood insurance goes down. They won't have to pay those, it, um, large flood insurance prices. I'm sure they've already seen the impacts. It's supposed to be a three-tier increase. I think we're still on tier one. Um, but a lot of these properties, the, um, within the next five to 10 years, their flood insurance will probably cost more than the, um, profits of work. Um, we're, a lot of municipalities are going to find that they're going to end up with a lot of vacant land because people aren't going to be able to pay for the insurance. When they get flooded out, they're going to not have insurance to fix the property, so they're just going to walk. So then you're going to have a vacant land piece of land that Borough's going to be stuck having to deal with. Okay, phase two. Phase two is from Bauer Hill Road up to Baldwin Street. Again, because of restraints of all the buildings that are tight against the stream, Bauer Hill Road is right up against the stream. This phase, we can, we, uh, decided to, for this option at least, we decided to continue the older soldier beam and lagging levy walls. Both, both banks, we're going to do it on the, uh, left bank. And then we're going to also, also on the right bank. Now with this, we're going to eliminate the sidewalk along Baldwin Hill, Baldwin, no, excuse me, Bauer Hill Road. And we're going to re, re-establish the, the pedestrian corridor up Baldwin Street and reconnect it into Bauer Hill Road at McLaughlin Run. The reason for this is we want to get that a little bit of extra space there for, um, for the, for the, um, flood control and establishing somewhat of a floodway or floodplain there in that corridor without having to significantly impact all the businesses and, and residential properties that are along Baldwin Street. Again, we're going to have, um, uh, two screw pumps. We're going to replace Bauer Hill Road Bridge. This is something we'll obviously have to work with the, um, the, um, county with, because that's a county bridge. But we want to eliminate that center column and, um, adjust that, that, the, um, the low, uh, rise of the, uh, you know, the, the structure. We also want to replace Baldwin Street Bridge. We want to raise that bridge a foot. We also want to widen that opening a few feet, quite a few feet actually, and get that opening so that the water can actually pass below that bridge without backing up two to three feet. Now, this, this resolves all the stream flooding all the way, all the way down to, to the, uh, confluence from Baldwin Street. This portion of the project is a fifteen million dollar, um, cost. Um, but, and it does include condemnation of four properties to, um, to make this happen, and I can show you what those properties are. Get this thing to continue to work, there we go. The properties that were going to be condemned are those three little house, houses along Bauer Hill Road here. And once, actually, the one structure that we, we, we called as to be condemned is actually, I found out just recently, had burned down, so it's no longer even, even an issue. But we'd have to condemn the property so we could do the work. As you can see here, here's the new, here's the new bridge across Baldwin Street. There's a pedestrian walkway. Um, we're going to reconstruct Bauer Hill Road as well. Um, as a lot of you know, there's been problems with Bauer Hill Road. It, it does. Um, as a lot of you know, there's been problems with Bowery Hill Road, it doesn't hold up. The, a lot of that problem is the soils below this road. So we're going to have a significant reconstruction of that road, but we're going to dig down about four feet. And get that. Playdough type soil that's in there out. And then. Bring in a bunch of stone to stabilize that road so they can actually handle the traffic it's getting. Um, and we show, uh, a new bridge at Bowery Hill Road. And the sidewalks are being revised to, to provide access to. Bluff Street, but we're not going to have the access down Bowery Hill Road anymore for pedestrians. There'll be, there'll be sign, there'll be signs to direct them to come down Baldwin Street. Yeah, here's Janeway, we have that. Um, access point built into this model as well. Um, here's the screw pump right at Janeway. And then we have a screw pump just outside, outside this view. And then here's, here's what it looks like, a close up of Baldwin Street Bridge. As you can see, all this green area. It doesn't exist as open area for water right now. The, the bridge is literally. As wide as those two blue lines. So by doing this, obviously we've been providing a lot more, a lot more room for water to pass underneath this bridge. This is, this is really telling in the model. Um, in fact, it kind of, there, I had a head scratch a few times because the model shows a. I, a little bit of a post-development jump just for like. Brief second, just below this, below the bridge. It's not that it's an actual jump. But what's happening is. The water is no longer three feet higher on this side than it is on this side of the bridge. Because it actually can pass under. So it actually shows it going level instead of. Um, three feet higher and then dropping down underneath and doing a hydraulic jump. So it was, it was very telling that this, this bridge is significantly impacting the flow of the lock and run. Okay. Phase three, phase three is about the same for all three options as well. Um, so option, so phase one and phase three are the same for all three options. Phase two is where the big changes, yeah.
Um, these are, these are like suggestions, right?
Yes.
Okay, just checking, that's.
Yeah, oh yeah, there's, there's three options for consideration of what we've come up with. We can always, obviously, put piece of little stuff together with this. This is what we've come up that works the best, the most cost effective. I know, I know you're seeing some large numbers. I get it, trust me, but cost effectively, they are the most cost effective. Other alternatives are a lot, lot larger than those. So. Phase three, again. Phase three is going to be a, a mix of an earthen levy and a. Soldier beam levy depending on property use and the availability. Um, we're going to install the, it's called the, the stop log, which is I was showing you down in Janeway. We're going to install that, one of those at the end of Maple Street so that water doesn't back up Maple Street anymore. Um. And then. This resolves all the flooding all the way up the rest of the way of the stream. Once we do this, basically, there's no structures that will be getting flooded. Typically, and I say that because obviously if a bridge gets blocked up with something. It could still potentially have some flooding. There's no way to control that. Phase three is a two point five million dollar project. Phase three, as you can see, here's the little wall we're going to build across. So here's the wall you saw the picture of. And then we're just going to bring a little, bring a little wall across to the large slope right here. Have the little stop wall, ax, access, stop log access point. With the existing concrete ramp that goes down to the stream. And again, we're going to provide some floodway in here so the water has somewhere to go. Um, and float downstream. Um. Couple, couple sections just so you can understand. You can see two blue lines. Okay, so this is, this is upstream of Baldwin Street. Remember I mentioned the three foot jump? This line up here, that's the hundred year flood. Pre-development. This is where it's going to be post development. Significantly lower than where the bridge is. Here's, 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 um, upstream of Bowery Hill Road. Not as much of a impact, but it's still. The little triangle on the line, a little dotted line, that is the hundred year, that is the proposed hundred year. Um, the straight line is the existing, so there's a drop in water surface elevation there. Here's the levy wall, you can see. Protecting all this property, there's no water in here because water can't get in there anymore. And then here is downstream of Commercial Street, same thing, it's about a. About a half a foot drop, do a foot drop. Here's the levy wall keeping all these buildings dry. Option two, this went a little bit, we went, um, a little different here. So some considerations, some savings. Again, as I mentioned. Phase one, phase three are the same. Phase two is where the difference is. Um. Bowery Hill Roads. And, and this portion of the stream here stays about the same as in option one. The big change here is instead of trying to reconstruct. Baldwin Street Bridge was, which is a significant cost. Um. Propose to put a cul-de-sac here. Put a little parquet. Have a, a pedestrian bridge here. Now that, they make a fiberglass pedestrian bridge, which we've installed in a number of communities. That can be basically placed by four people. You don't even need a crane to place these. They don't move, they've been tested in, um. Squall Run down in Fox Chapel, we have two of them there. And when Squall Run was completely destroyed. Bridges didn't even, but didn't even show him, show any, um, impact. Um. And then reestablish the pedestrian walkway and then. Widen, um. McLaughlin Run intersection here to provide a right and a left turn lane here so that. People can get in and out of here a little bit better, a little bit more efficiently. Um. So again, phase one, same as fa, uh, as option one. Phase two. Soldier beam wall on both sides, both sides of McLaughlin Run from Bowery Hill Road up to. Um. Um, Baldwin Street. Baldwin Street Bridge gets replaced with a pedestrian, fiberglass pedestrian bridge. Build a cul-de-sac on Baldwin Street so it's not longer through street. Um. Oops. We install the screw pumps, um. This redraw, this, this again resolves all the stream flooding. Cost for this one's thirteen point two million. We get to the end here, we're going to show you a comparison of the three options so you can see. How the, how the numbers change. This one does include condemning six properties, three of them are those three houses. Fourth one is the one that's, was, has recently burned down and then there's two others. Right where the cul-de-sac is going to be, that'll have to be condemned. Um. So here's, here's what it looks like. Again, this area stays about the same as phase or option one. Um, you can see the, um, improvements of Janeway there. Bridge. Come down. Here's the cul-de-sac, here's the bridge, there's a nice blow up. We should have another, I should have another blow up right, whoops, right here. So instead of having this, you can see this big rectangle where the old bridge was. Instead of having that huge structure there, you just have this nice little fiberglass walking bridge right here. So there's a lot less obstruction through this area here for, for the water. Which again, this is what causes most of the flooding down Baldwin Street because the water backs up here. Flows right through here and then down the road. Um. We figured we could put a nice parquet here with a gazebo. The people can, can sit at they, and. Has the interconnection between the business section. Of Bridgerville and the more residential sections. And phase three, as I mentioned, is the same as for both, for all three options. And you can see, you can see it's got the same hydraulic impacts as the other, actually above Baldwin Street, it gets even more, it's almost like four feet of a difference between. Pre and post. Um, our hills same and so is Commercial Street. And then option three, now this is the one that's more of, um. Out of the, out of the box more, it's going to have a lot more impact, it's going to have a lot of different look. Um. Uh. Does a lot of good things, has a lot of, uh, negatives to it. Um, but for consideration. Um. As I indicated, um. Phase one's the same or. And phase three are the same as the other two options. Phase two is significantly different. Phase two, we're going to completely eliminate Bowery Hill Road. From the intersection of off all the way up to McLaughlin Run. Um. So we're going to use that area to, to widen the stream. Provide a slope. Provide a report, a repair and core work through there. We're going to build an earthen. Um. Levy on the, um. Baldwin Street side of this. Plantings, you can see all the green areas is basically going to become park area. We're going to reconstruct the intersection at Bowery Hill Road and Railroad Street. To have a more of a plus intersection, a more functioning intersection. And then we're going to do a roundabout at the, at the, instead of the traffic light at Baldwin Street in McLaughlin Run. Have a little stub for Bowery Hill Road, just to service those few. Um, the church and a few houses that are along there. And then reconnect, reconnect the Bowery Hill Road. With a, with, uh, a different road. System. As you can see through this, and it's going to blow up in a second here, it's going to have some significant impacts. Um. Let's go past this, so. As we indicated, so we're going to, um, remove Bowery Hill Road. From the railroad street, welcome running. All the way to, um, lock and run. We're going to reconfigure the intersection at, um, Baldwin Street. And at Bowery Hill Road. Reconstruct that bridge, that bridge now gets a lot smaller at Bowery Hill Road. Because we're not trying to get Bowery Hill Road across it, so it gets much, a much smaller structure. Which allows us, reduces the cost of that bridge, but also. Reduces the, uh, the impact it has on the hydraulics. Um. Then obviously, we're going to replace Baldwin Street Bridge similarly to what we did in option one. To accept the roundabout that we proposed. Um. This, this, this option gets you a nice vegetated. Repairing buffer through this corridor instead of. The urban, um. Stream channel that we're, that we have now and that we would maintain with the other options. The, uh. Big things with this. It's one, you're condemning thirty seven properties. That's. Doesn't, that doesn't, um, sit well really with myself, uh, but it's something to consider. And then price this. Just for phase two is sixteen point nine million. So it's a huge. Cost for this, this, this option. Um. Here's a blow up of it, you can see the, uh, new intersection and how it would, how it would work. Uh, here's the roundabout. This kind of mimics the master plan that, um, to, to an extent, it mimics the master plan that, um, E P D came up with. After you do all this, there is a piece of land here that would definitely be redevelopable, it could be, um. Resold and repurposed for. Commercial use. Or residential use, whichever the case may be. Um. Some of these properties, even though we have them shown green, you could probably repurpose these parcels as well because they'll be, they won't flood anymore. There's that, here's that intersection at Bowery Road, as you can see, this bridge is a lot smaller. There's the old bridge way out here to here. Now it's, it stops here, so you're reducing the amount of bridge there. Um, widening the stream through here significantly. The floodplain gets a lot larger here, so we have a lot more. Area down at the stream for water to be instead of it being. Up above, so the water surface drops. Oops. And then here's the roundabout. Ties into the alleyway. Ties into McLaughlin Run. There's Bowery Hill Road will come in like this, and then there's the little road stub. And as you can see, this bridge kind of matches up with the phase one bridge for the most part. Or the option one bridge for the most part, other than it'll get, it'll change slightly to allow for the, uh. Curves for the roundabout. And then obviously, this gets rid of the traffic signal there with the roundabout. Um. And then, and Pendot would be involved with this because obviously this is their road. And they're going to have comments on the, significant comments on the roundabout option, but. They are promoting roundabouts everywhere, so. That they may, they should like that. And phase three is the, the same. Now here's, here's where the. Importance comes in. So here's our, here's our options that we've come up with. So option one. Again, that has just a refresher. It has replacing Bowery Hill Road Bridge, it has replacing Baldwin Street Bridge in. In kind, adjusting them to provide hydraulic opening. Total cost for all three phases. It's twenty one point four million dollars. Four properties get condemned, six truck structures get demolished. Um, option two. Is the one with the cul-de-sac and the pedestrian bridge. It's nineteen point six million. There's six properties condemned with that. And six tr, structures demolished. And then option three, which is the, um, repairing buffers, um, option. It's twenty three point. Three five million. Um, a good four, four million more than option two. Thirty seven properties get condemned, which means no tax revenue from those parcels anymore. Twenty seven structures will be demolished. Um, there's a lot of businesses and. Option three that would be eliminated that are. Profitable businesses that. I, I, I personally don't see as a. Feasible scenario to tear those buildings down. They, um, I mean, there's a number of businesses here that are flourishing. Um, there's a few businesses along here that are flourishing that. That this is going to greatly impact. Um.
John, do those costs include any of the?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you're talking about include any of the property acquisition or is it?
Yes. They do. In, includes everything. We included the cost for acquisition. Um, cost for demolition. Construction costs. All inclusive.
So, John, I have a question too.
Yeah.
So either of these plans, option one, two, or three. Um. You, you mentioned earlier that, you know, you do this and, uh, you know, the, uh. Property owner's insurance will go down and won't be considered, uh, floodplain. If we did this. Would these, would this area be taken off a? Uh, be considered a floodplain, so to speak?
Right, what we do is after we get this off.
Is there different, is there different levels, is like, does, is level, is option one? Everybody, you know, are they all the same?
All three of these options get us the same result. Nobody, nobody's structure is getting flooded anymore. Of course, some of them is, the structures are gone, so that's why they're not getting flooded, but. There's no, there's no longer any structures through, through the corridor getting flooded. So what we do is after we get this constructed. However, we end up finding funding to do so. Um. We do it with, we'll do the letter of map revision, submit to FEMA. Takes about eight months to get, to get through it with them. Um, I just finished one up in Indiana, PA. Um. Once that map's revised. Every one of those parcels will no longer show the structures within the floodplain, which means they don't have to pay the increased flood insurance rates. They wouldn't. They wouldn't be required to have flood insurance to get a loan or to, um. Or for someone to buy the property. So they're, if they're not required to buy flood insurance. It's, and it, it's, it'll be a significant savings. Um, like I said. A lot of, in fact, some of these structures along this corridor. The flood insurance will be well above. The, um. House payments. Per year. If you pay twelve, twelve thousand dollars for, um. And then, and you're on to pay, pay for the house every year for your loan. You may be paying fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars in flood insurance when, when FEMA is all said and done.
Yeah, John, you mentioned that three tier insurance plan as if it's a program that's. Like, i- is it already underway, those plans?
Yes, yes, it's in place. Um. They, they haven't been real clear, FEMA has been real clear on how. And when it's, when each tier is going to implement, they had an initial, initial plan and. They've already deviated from that and. And I, and I'm sure the federal government has, um. Kind of weighed in on them a little bit to. Um. Delay it even more with what's happened this year, obviously. Um. But it's, it's supposed to raise three times in the next few years. And this just stems back to the fact that for all these years. All these properties along rivers, along the lakes, along the ocean, they keep getting clobbered every year. And FEMA keeps giving them money to, to, um. Re, rebuild. If you're in a floodplain, you're going to be, you're going to pay more than somebody else, and if you're at a high risk floodplain, you're going to pay more than someone at a low risk. Of flooding. Instead of everyone just paying a flat rate for flood insurance that just didn't cover it. Um, basically after New York got flooded, what, four years ago, it was? FEMA was for all intents and purposes out of money for a while there. They, they had so much money that I had to. Out the, to rebuild New York that. They were broke for all, broke and. They, they're functioning again, but there's still, every time we have a hurricane, every time. And we have these big storms, um. FEMA's forked out a lot of money to rebuild. Um, so potential funding for this. Um, there are a number of grants out there, some of them are, um. Um, so potential funding for this, um there are a number of grants out there, some of them are um we are actually getting already, we got. Close to a little over four hundred thousand dollars from D C E D C E D. For the projects we already have underway. The Army Corps of Engineers has a section two nineteen infrastructure grant. That that pays for large projects, it's not a small project type of grant or larger projects, so it's a section seven thousand one grant. Neither of them are open right now, but they will be coming open here shortly. One of the things with these those two grants, you have to have a viable project, what that means is you've got to have your permits in place, you have to have some other. Approvals in place before you can even apply for those grants. FEMA has a mitigation assistance grant out there as well. The FEMA mitigation assistance, you have to have a FEMA approved plan in place before you can get the grant money. So there's obviously legwork that needs to be done before you can go for those couple grants. C F A Act thirteen flood mitigation program. This is a more of a local grant funding. Um, we can get numerous C F A Act thirteen grants for this project. We have it shown as three phases, it could obviously be broken down into fifty phases, whatever we can afford to do. And create some of the projects, we can get um if we can get four hundred thousand dollars of Act thirteen money for. Say, a section of the wall. We build that section alone, that's all we build at that time. C F A also has the P A Small Water and Sewer Program funding, which can be applied to this. And they have the H two O um grants that could be applied to this. D C D also has the uh Infrastructure Bank. Now, this is a low interest loan and it's for bridges, so this is this is a some funding that we can use towards. Replacing the two bridges if if that's the choice the borough makes. Then the Allegheny County G E D F grants, um they're currently not open, we've. Seized some my borough has grants from them right now, actually, that we're using. Anticipated schedules for this, just to give you guys a scope, um phase one is. It's about four months of engine of final engineering, we have the model basically done, I will I'd like to refine that model. Um before it goes into the D P, it'll probably show even more improvements than what we've found so far. It'll be. About eight months of permitting and easement acquisition, basically that'll happen at the same time. It it's a one oh five small projects with D P, like we like I indicated, we've already met with them on that project, they're on board. But it is a small project, one oh five permit, so it takes. Eight months for them to review it. To be if if we do all the whole project at once to be after we get the permit to be about three months to get it. Uh the construction documents pulled together and it out out to bid and awarded. It'd be about an eighteen month construction period. And then like I indicated, it's about twelve months, eight to twelve months to get FEMA to do the Lomar. Phase two, we don't have any, um we don't have a detailed survey of this area yet, we do have a detailed survey for the phase one area. So there'd be. There'd be about a month of survey work. Um twelve months of engineering for all for all the walls and everything we need to do for permitting. Um, this area, it's going to be about eighteen months of permitting and easement acquisition. D P is going to put us through the wringer to get the permit. And then, once once we get the permits in place, same three months to get everything out to bid and awarded. That phase is about a thirty six month construction period, we three years. Obviously, there'll be shutdowns and reopenings of roads and everything, that'll happen. And then, again, it's that same twelve months for the FEMA Lomar. And then phase three, again, about a month of surveys, four months of engineering. Six that permit would be pretty quickly, that'd be a small project as well, but that'd be about a six month process. Same three months for construct uh for construction docs. That that only take about a year to complete that whole phase. And then the same twelve months for the FEMA Lomar. And that is all the information I have for you right now, it's a lot of information. Obviously, the 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 costs and the impacts to the community with how many properties get condemned is. The big considerations on these projects and what character you want. Uh Lennon Smith, we're kind of leaning to option two, kind of like the making Baldwin Street the pedestrian corridor. Getting people off of Bauer Hill Road, because even though there is a sidewalk error. It's not the safest situation because Bauer Hill Road is narrow and it is very heavily trafficked. So getting people pedestrians out of there is actually a good thing in that aspect. It has the the lowest cost overall. And I I think it provides some good amenities for the community. Option three would be great if it made sense, doesn't make sense to me, doesn't make sense to the rest of our office. Losing thirty seven properties and the tax revenues available from them just doesn't seem appetizing. And then option one pretty much keeps the character of the borough as it is for an additional two million dollars.
John, I got a question, a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
This is Dale Livingston. Phase one goes or phase one goes up through. Bauer Hill Road from Bauer Hill Road to the skating rink or or down to the.
Right, from commercial from the from the downstream end of Commercial Street to the skating rink.
So you remove the you you remove that center pier from from Bauer Hill Road. Uh to help make stuff flow, water debris flow through there. What about the the two con conduits right behind Dairy Delight, are they not going to catch?
They will catch, there's but but they are they are they actually have a wider opening, those two have a wider opening than our hill road does.
Okay.
So you basically have two, in fact, if you get on it right now, you'll see it, you actually have two streams going down through there right now, water goes through the two culverts. The the key to the key to keeping those those functioning is the um. Keeping the debris out of the bottom of those. Uh the debris was extremely high when we when the borough went in and cleaned it out and got the permit, they removed over three feet of debris from the bottom of that's. Culvert.
Okay.
Yes, you're right, you're right, there is still a structure there. But it's the openings, the hydraulic capacity of those. Two culverts is more than what Bauer Hill Road has.
Okay, um next question. The this new um access at Jane Way. With. If they put that in, and I don't know what the timing for that is, if they put that in before they remove the the Bauer Hill Road. We start getting debris in there, will that will that new engineered gateway access? Will that stand up to the hydraulic pressure of the debris and and everything else that comes down there?
Yes, it's designed to have the hydraulic, it's designed to support the hydraulic pressure for the depth of water we have. In that corridor. The way it's the way it's a kind of like a design build for the manufacturer. You say we're going to have nine feet of water at the under your flood elevation. It's a nine foot wide opening, it needs to be able to withstand that hydraulic pressure.
Okay.
And that's how they designed, so what happens is those plastic logs get thicker or thinner depending on the depth of water.
Okay, um and one last question, it was one that Joe Federucci asked. Um, do the do the um grants require um?
Match.
Match.
Some grants require match, some grants don't, everyone's different. G E D F does not, so they're the ones we just got. Help me out here, Joe, is it four hundred and? It's four hundred and twenty three thousand dollars if I remember right.
Yeah, four hundred and twenty five thousand for the park flood work and then a hundred thousand for Bauer Hill Road.
Yeah, so. We have no match those, all those projects came in under budget, so we're. There's really no cost to the borough for those ones.
Okay, but I mean, as far as as any of the 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 funding options for um the bigger project here.
Right, uh so yeah, so depending on the project is depending on the um match.
Okay.
Most of these have maybe a fifteen percent match. The G E D F doesn't have does not require a match. And like, not a hundred percent familiar with the core with their with their match requirements are, there may not be any match with them either because the way those. Those funds work, since they're federal 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 monies.
Okay. Planning Commission, you got questions? Justine, Mike, Larry?
Yeah, I do have some questions and comments, uh I guess the first comment is that I'll make. Uh since you all know my relationship with the firm, this is the first I've seen this. So I haven't had any involvement, whatever with John or anyone else in developing these alternatives or looking at the models or anything else, so. It's all new to me. Uh John, I do have a question on, I mean, you wrote off retention pretty quickly. What is the volume of retention that will be needed to? Make the existing channel somewhat functional with the hundred year flood, I mean, have you what is the actual volume required for storage?
I never got it to work, so.
Well, you didn't get it to work, I understand you didn't get it to work at the park and that's not a surprise.
Right.
Uh but they're upstream of that.
I was never able to come up with a number that would like a volume that would actually work, so I I don't have a number for you.
Would you have like an average capacity of the uh stream conveyance? How much it can convey?
I can provide it, I don't have it, I don't have it readily available.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see that personally, I'd like to see the storm hydrograph. Uh and the reason I'm asking this is uh it it sounds to me like you didn't look at any potential storage outside the borough.
I did not, no, we did not look at the storage outside the borough.
Well, there's a there's a site that's upstream on McLaughlin Run, it's been talked about a number of times.
You are correct and. And I'm in agreement with you on that, but we didn't look at that as part of this project.
I think we need to take a look at that. I mean, it's a very large site, my suspicion is it's to provide a heck of a lot of storage, whether or not it's enough. Uh attenuate the peak rate of flow and make it more manageable, I don't know, but I really think we need to see that number. The mine elevations, where do you do you actually have? What we would consider good mine maps that would give you those elevations?
I can download them, I don't have them downloaded, but the key, the one that the real easy way to know where they're at is. If you if you go to McLaughlin Run Park, water is crystal clear. Soon as you go right around the bend there, that's where the acid mines pouring out of the out of the hillside, that's when the water turns orange. So it's the elevation of that's typical elevation of the mine.
Well, that's the elevation where the water is coming out, I'm not sure that that's actually. I mean, if you have a portal that you can find there, okay, I can see that, but. You know, uh the mine could be above that, could be below that, and it's just got a lot of static head on it. You know, either direction, so I, you know, I I don't know that personally, I'd write off that uh issue with the mine. All that quickly, uh you did say something about. Backwater, you assuming you looked at the tunnel, uh that the. Backwater elevation at the downstream end of the tunnel was such that it would impede flow, is that what I understood you to say?
Yeah, it doesn't get the benefit, it doesn't get the benefit it would if it was a free flowing tunnel.
So you don't get free discharge, you can't you cannot uh. Uh design that tunnel with a slope that you would get free discharge at the downstream end.
No, not because of the way the back channel functions.
Where where would that outlet at?
I looked at, I ran I ran one model where I. So the reason I know how how this is working is I ran a run model with a tunnel that discharged. In McLaughlin in McLaugh actually in McLaughlin Run down by the uh skating rink. And then I ran I ran another one. That I it blew the model blew up on me when I tried to get it to work, but I uh I ran another one, it put um put it right. Right downstream of the C S O at the end of. Commercial Street.
So you didn't look at anything farther downstream?
No.
Cause you there there is some elevation advantage here, I would think.
Some, um church the back channel is relatively flat, but there is some, yeah, you gain you gain a foot or so.
What size of that, you have any idea what's with diameter that tunnel would need to be?
Um, let's see here, I think I I had it here, I had the model, let's see if I still do. If I have the model open, I can tell you. Options planned, planned you planned you. Plan. Wrong model.
What is the problem with the back channel, it just it's just so flat and it doesn't flow, is that what I'm hearing?
It's got multiple problems, one of the primary problems with it is it's. The flood control gate at the high end of it does not function.
It's where's what you say at the high end, where is that?
And I'll show you, see I can show you here on Google.
Oh, you better zoom in because it's pretty hard to read these files.
It's up above. The the school, the the high school.
Ah, okay.
It uh.
Where it's where it splits.
Yeah, where it splits, yes. There's the there's the gate system there is not functioning and it's not letting water down through to flush out, clean out the back channel. So. Right, I don't know, Larry, if you were if you saw the picture at the very beginning of the presentation of what? The confluence of McLaughlin Run and it and back channel looks like right now, there's a three foot island that's got the entire. Confluence filled in right now.
Yeah, I saw that, so let me ask, who's who's responsible for maintaining it?
Well, theoretically, the flood authority is responsible for the back channel itself. Before Joe was involved, um Joe was uh involved. We were we were trying to we were trying to get some discussions with the flood, the flood committee, the flood authority to get them to look into doing something and we weren't very successful.
Who's the is it still Band Eyes or on the engineer there?
It's Joe, yeah, it's Joe sites, Gateway Gateway Gateway.
Does Bridger Point anyone to the board? Yeah, Joe Coward, you know, or does anyone else? We have a board.
Larry, yes, there's an appointee to the board.
Who is it?
Uh I believe it's still Joe Miesha.
Here's. This is a Jack, this is the asphalt plant, Larry, I don't know if you can see the screen.
Yep, I can see it, yep.
This is Jack Carghony's property.
Right.
This is this is the uh back channel, right here.
That's the back channel there, so. Is there a weir there?
Yeah, there's a there's a there's a there's a structure here.
What kind of structure is it, do you know?
Not not, I don't have, I haven't got my hands on copies of plans yet on it, I'm trying, I've been trying, I'm trying to find them. That's one of the things I I would I am I would like to put push is to get this get that thing functioning, so this can be cleaned out some.
Looks like there's a dam across the channel when you zoom in.
Yeah, looks like Carghony's did something.
Right there, yep, yep, right up above there a little bit, right across the main channel.
Yeah, it's a it's a it's a little splash pad weir, it's like a wall in the, you're right, it is a it is a dam, it's it's not a damn dam, it's.
So the theory is this thing was designed to regulate flow and provides sufficient flow to flush the back channel.
Right.
And the back channels probably sediment it sedimented in from. From the beginning to the end, and so it doesn't flow, so. How much does that backwater impact this flooding model?
See, very, very significantly, actually, especially especially the lower section.
So if you had free discharge, let's just assume that you cut your model off and you dropped into a black hole. What impact did that have on the flooding uh in McLaughlin Run?
It would drop the slower section.
Just the lower section.
Well, we'll just start with lower section because that. Well, we'll just start with lower section because that, that part I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with. I'm really familiar with is it was dropping it approximately three feet. Um, and then that works its way back as you work.
Would, would the hundred year flood be within hell bank?
Yes, yes, very close. Yes.
So if they just maintained the free discharge, that. Flooding in the lower end could be eliminated. And when you say, I'm assuming you mean from like commercial street to the roller ring.
Right, yes.
Alright, so then when you move upstream. And when you move upstream from there, the next section. What is it that's the controlling? Factor for flooding there? Is it the?
Baldwin Street.
The Baldwin Street Bridge.
Because it's, it, it backs up so high behind it. It backs about three feet above the bridge deck.
That's just, that's assuming unimpeded flow, right?
Right.
You're not, you're not thinking that there's debris caught on anything. That's just the limiting capacity of the bridge, of the bridge.
So, yes, so the hydraulic model goes about three feet above bridge deck there, which means the water is pouring down Baldwin Street and flooding properties.
So if you replace that bridge. Are you able to get sufficient conveyance through there? Can you get an opening big enough to convey the flood?
Yes, it, it actually compaves it below the bridge, below the bridge deck without overtopping. It actually, the water comes straight through there, Larry, the hydraulic line. There's no hydraulic jump anymore.
Yeah, I do remember seeing that in the model.
And there's no, no flooding of these properties ups, ups, towards Maple Street. That's why we don't.
So. Clean the channel, replace the bridge. About where does that make, how far upstream does that make us good to go before we have to do something more to reduce flooding?
Maple Street.
That gets you to Maple Street, huh?
Mm hmm. And the only thing we gotta do, the only thing we want to do at Maple Street is. The, uh, at the end of the ramp there, we just gotta build one of those, uh. Log systems so that the water doesn't back up the actual ramp. The, um, the wall it's in place is high enough now that it, the water, the hundred year doesn't over top of it, even as in current conditions. But it still can back up the ramp. So we put one of those. Log systems. Water from backing up the ramp.
So now let's talk about from the Maple Street Bridge. On up to the park. I mean, we've got that channel runs behind all those houses.
Right.
What are we looking at there?
Well, for the first three or four lots, it's a, uh, just an earthen levee. And then from there up to about Coolidge is where the, um. It'd just be a smaller soldier beam and lagging wall system.
So like a canalization kind of a project.
Right, yeah, it basically, basically the soldier beam and lagging wall becomes your levee.
Right.
Set the top of the wall three feet above.
What kind of pressure are you allowing yourself?
Three feet.
Alright.
That's what's required, that's what's required under FEMA for a levy.
Alright, cool. Um. So, yeah, John, I, I realize we need to take a look at, uh, you know, if we can. What, to what extent can we shave that peak? You know, if we go upstream, uh, if you look on up the clock and run up, I don't know if you remember where Cole that used to be, it's something different now. Right upstream from that, there's a power substation. I think they call it Moes Block Manufacturing, if you're on Google Earth now.
Moes Block Manufacturing.
Can you zoom in a little bit? Let me see where you are.
I'm up at nineteen or I'm all the way up to nineteen.
Oh yeah, you're way up. You're way too far up.
Too far up. You're thinking this area right here, aren't you?
Uh. I think, yes, that's it. Yes, that's it. Yeah. Yeah, that area, that whole area there. There's a lot of volume to be had there. Uh, if you do sideline storage and you know, put the. You know, define your channel downstream with that, you can back up a fair amount of water. You'd have to do a lot of excavation there. Uh, but I think you can get some fairly significant sideline storage. If you can shave that peak. Enough, a lot of these other things become much more viable. Now, I realize that's in St. Clair and that's. Going to be problematic, but I think, I really think we need to look at it because right now, I mean, twenty million bucks. I mean, that, that's obviously a very huge lift for the borough. But I think we need to look at these alternatives as fourth alternative and see what we can do with it. But the whole canalization, I really think we need to dig in on that back channel because that just, that bugs the hell out of me. I think it's allowed to, I assume it's been allowed to sediment in and it's in that way. I don't want to say since I moved to the borough in seventy seven, I can always remember cracks on that stream there. It just didn't flow real well at all.
Yeah.
And that shouldn't be the case.
If I can say one thing, a couple of things actually, um, I personally own property across from that Upper St. Clair. Uh. Acreage for sale. And I do have the mine maps. Because I have, I've had them for about eight years now. Not only are you looking at somebody, a developer that owns twenty one acres. Of that property, you're also looking at. People or a person that owns three lots at the flattest. Spot closest to the creek. Bridgeville owns a, a little bit. I, I forget which, we had discussed it last year when we talked about accessing when Upper St. Clair. Or the developer wanted to access that property and.
Right, we have, we have a conservation zone up there. Right.
Correct. Um, so, but again, that, that whole area is undermined. Um, but, um, also to the development that's on the top of the hill, and I forget the actual name of the development, does have a retention pond at the creek. They never do anything with it. But they consider it a retention pond, and I do believe I still have the drawings for that. So. And their property's up for sale.
Oh yeah, that, that property is basically not available for a lot of reasons, not the least, which is. They needed to take, take our, uh. Conservation land to make some of their alternatives work and, you know. Well, we had that discussion. Presumably they went away.
Well, they're, they're, they have a different realtor now, so who knows what's going to happen, but.
Okay. Um, Tim, Mike, you got any questions?
Just back on the funding, John. Um. I mean, obviously these plans start and stop for a borough like Bridgeville with, with funding. Experience, I mean, what's, what's the percentage that we could be hopeful about actually getting funded as opposed to like, are we talking about single percentages and, and we've got to do the rest of the lift ourselves or? You know, if we pursue that in the right way, can we get the lion's share of it paid for? I'm not looking to lock you in, just give me a sense of like, is there even something to pursue here?
I believe there's, I believe the lines. Um, portion of this can be funded through grants and. Some small loans, but most of it, I believe most of it can get through grants. Like I indicated, we've already, we've received a significant amount just in the past year, just for some, for flood control projects.
Hmm.
We got basically five hundred thousand dollars last year for flood control projects. Between Bowery Hill Road, McLaughlin Run Park and Janeway.
John, do you know what the relationship is between the Corps of Engineers and Churchers?
Sorry, didn't hear a word, Larry. I apologize.
Do you know what the, the relationship is between the Corps of Engineers and the, and the flood authority? I mean. Who does the flood authority answer to, I guess is the question I'm asking.
I think the communities that are, that are associated, theoretically, the communities that are associated with it.
Yeah, but I would tend to think.
They answer to the Army Corps.
Yeah, they do answer to the Army Corps.
That would have been, yeah, and I, I'm just wondering if. Uh, it might be appropriate to get a meeting arranged between them and the Army Corps and frankly raise holy hell about this channel, why they're not maintaining it. I mean, I hate to put it in that position, but you know what? People are getting flooded because they're not doing what they need to do is what I'm hearing.
Yep. I, I was shocked that the, uh, the Corps didn't even look at the, um, the, the back channel with their study. I figured they would have looked at that a little bit more than they did. Like I said, that is.
Well, they just lofted off at the channel, right?
No, they incorporated like just, just above and just below and they, they plugged into known elevation for.
Right, yes. Just give themselves a hydraulic point of beginning, really.
Right. Yeah, exactly. So it's, 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 it's high to start with.
Well, yeah, and that doesn't work and they probably don't know why it doesn't work. So. I, I honestly think that's a discussion that needs to be had.
Okay. Um. Are there any council members that got questions, comments? Uh, BJ asks.
BJ's put a question.
Asked who maintains the levees and oops, lost it.
Screw pumps, et cetera.
Screw pumps, et cetera. Is that the borough or is that?
Just screw pumps would be the responsibility of the, um, borough.
Okay.
The levee wall, it'd be basically the, if not, wouldn't be much maintenance to them. Um, I mean, it's a steel and concrete structure, so.
And, and what sort of costs are we looking at for, for maintenance with, with the screw pumps and generators and?
Um. I don't have a solid number right now on it. Obviously, we're not, because again, a lot of it, a lot of it is driven by the. Final design of those on what the costs are. Um. I mean, if, if, if it's a very simple system, which is what we'd like to do. The costs are minimal. You, if you do a little maintenance on your diesel generator and what we've talked about doing is. Making the diesel generator the primary source electric and, and. Um, like Duken Light is the secondary. That way they get exercised because one of the problems with generators is they have to fire up and they need to be exercised or they.
Yeah.
So that's one of the things to keep, to keep that done. So I mean, the maintenance for a screw pump is. I mean, it's only going to be a thousand dollars a year at most.
Okay.
I mean. Cory Office has three or four of them, correct, Larry? I remember right and.
Yeah.
And they've been there for, since the seventies and they're, they're still functioning strong.
So do we know the lifespan of a screw pump? I mean, can they, can they say that it's twenty years or longer or?
Probably quite a bit longer.
Yeah, the screw pumps in Cory Office room is fifty years old now.
Right.
Okay.
They're really fairly easy to maintain. There's not a lot to them, really. John, you on that back channel, do you have a profile? All the way down to the mains, Tim?
I don't, but I have good grade shots at Painter's Run and at McLaughlin Run. So like we got that, you can interpolate, interpolate.
But you don't get all the way back down to where it comes into the main channel at the high school?
Down there below, um, the Cross Creek Office Building.
Yes, basically.
Yeah, I don't know, but, but, but I can get.
They didn't model that? There's no?
No.
I really think we need to get a couple of elevations in there and just. Try to resolve the question of if that was bred. Uh, what would that do for us as far as hydraulic grade line, uh, where McLaughlin Run enters? And see if in fact that, you know, the notion that. Getting free discharge, you see if free discharge is even possible, frankly.
Um, Nick asked, asked a couple of questions. One, are the grants reimbursed, reimbursement based?
Um, as in would, would pay, would pay out the money and then would request the money back from the grant?
Yeah.
Uh, depends, depends what type it is, John. Um, the nice thing with the, uh, some of the grants now that you have this studied, you can apply for and be eligible for a lot more, uh. Opportunities without having to study, you don't have the opportunity even to apply. So the. Pool of money that's out there for flooding, once it's been studied, uh, you can apply for a lot. More grants. Some of them are reimbursement grants. You get a borrow money upfront and then you get reimbursed on the backside. Other ones are, um, straight up grant.
Okay. Um, and I'm not sure, Nick asked another one. I, and I don't quite totally understand it. Nick, are you, can you? Get on and ask a question about the, the retention?
Yeah, so, um, I understand that it's undermined down there, uh, past McLaughlin, that that land is for sale. Um, is there a possibility? Of making that a manmade lake for a retention pond? And that solves two, two, maybe three problems. It creates more of an economy for gaming because it can be used for a gaming station. It gives St. Clair lake houses and it gives us water control. Is that a feasible idea at all?
Something that we looked at. Um. I mean, there'll be, there's obviously all kinds, there's pluses and minuses to all of it. Um. Because it'll be in Upper St. Clair, would have to get up, obviously first and foremost, but if you get up St. Clair to agree to it. But we need to see if it would actually work and actually solve any problems. Based on the cost of it before we'd, um, even introduce it as an option.
Yeah, the more, a more direct answer, Nick, is if you, if it's already filled with water, there's no retention available. It's got to be empty for it to work.
Right, and that's, that's where the undermining part would come into place. You wouldn't completely fill it.
Well, I mean, every, every gallon of water that's sitting there is a lake is a gallon. It's not available for retention. And we're trying to.
Pretend as much as possible.
Trying to take away as much water as we can, if in fact it's doable. And I understand the issue with St. Clair, but I mean, I. You know, just let that go for a while. It's the, the first question is, is it even technically feasible? Once you answer that question, you can start to address some of these other potential issues.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um.
I got one quick question, Dale.
Go ahead, Mike.
So all, all your calculations, John, are they based on? Upper St. Clair and Bethel Park doing nothing?
Yes, it takes the, it takes the, the known flow for the, for all the FEMA studies that have been done for McLaughlin Run and just uses that flow and, and runs it through the model.
So if they did, if Bethel Park or Upper St. Clair did something to mitigate, because they all had, they had flooding as well in the past. If they, it's like, I know, for example, like where, um. Outback Steakhouse was, you know, they did, they did a new culvert here. They did some, they did some work. Um. If they did. Either community did, uh, you know, having the same type of meetings we are, would that affect our numbers? Or is it, you know, it doesn't make a difference because it's still coming downstream?
Unless they're proposing, as Larry's mentioned, they like a large pond, a pond system, a detention system somewhere upstream, either whether it's. And Claire, we're going to look at or something even up and up into Bethel Park, unless they propose something that's going to significantly hold water back. The only thing they're going to potentially do is they're going to open up a culvert to get water through faster, which is going to disaster bake downstream problems.
Exactly. Yeah, building bitter, bigger culverts up there just gets the water dust quicker and makes our problem worse.
Exactly. That's why I just thought, just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Um. Any other questions from the planning commission?
No.
Okay, Joe, we got, uh, public on here. Is there anybody that's got questions, comments?
I'm not sure. They can unmute themselves.
I know Pat was, Pat de Blasio was on. I don't know if anybody else is on. Pat, you got any questions?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, first regarding the back channel in Churchers Creek, uh. I stood there with Joe Miesha. Not at the twenty eighteen flood, but at the prior, at the flood before that, um, afterwards, I think Mike, you might remember this as well. Joe Miesha worked tirelessly to get. The, the, the back channel dredged just a short piece by where McLaughlin Run came into the back channel of Churchers Creek. It is my understanding that the back channel is still not part of the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, flood, Fulton Flood Control Project. And it's also my understanding that the weir has not worked, and that comes from Joe Sights, that the weir has not worked since it was put in. Um, as Larry pointed out, there was not enough flow to remove the sediment. Uh, so I wanted to, to put those pieces out there as far as, you know, who's responsible. And we have not obviously dredged it or taken the sediment out of it since. That the flood before this, the twenty eighteen flood. Having, having said that. Got a really interesting, uh, you know, flood control project. My. My comment to the planning commission is. There's more, there's more of a problem in this area than flood control. there's more, there's more of a problem in this area than flood control. Flooding is a major problem. But traffic, ball and street, parking, those are also parts of the problem. The, the, the properties in phase two are impacted by multiple issues. Flooding is just one of them. And I looked at option number one, I, I thought John's comment was perfect. For a little bit more, you can save, you can keep it exactly the way it is, or pretty much, you know, for, for option one. I would hope that we would not want to keep it exactly. There are some improvements, and I thought the culvert set was rather interesting. Uh, John, did you take a look at all in phase one, um, about going through, uh, the, uh, Silhall Cement Plant? Did you look at that as an, as an option in phase one?
Uh, I'm sorry, I missed something there.
True. In phase one, rather than screw pumps and levees, and by the way, I think Larry is, you know, obviously if you could dredge it and eliminate the problem entirely, uh, dredging the back channel, but the, on the other side of the railroad tracks is a cement plant.
Yes.
Did you take a look at just taking the creek through the cement plant?
Did not, no.
I would encourage you to at least take a look at those elevations. Um, I have mentioned this to Dick Theodory, um, and he is not, he does not object to it being considered. Obviously, he would want just compensation, but it might truly improve the, uh, the community as well as being an easy way to solve the problem. Um, the, uh, the third option in phase two certainly seems to provide a better community environment. I'm curious as to the planning commission spots on the holistic approach to the, uh, to the solution. Anybody?
I, I, I.
Looking at it more than the project?
You know, I, I, I'm willing to, to look at options. I, I think it would be good to look at options, you know, if there's something different out there that may be better and maybe outside the box. So.
I would. No, I'm sorry, Justin, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, you go.
I have a question, Pat. So what's, so I'm assuming that Nick Theodory is the owner of Silhalls, is that right?
Uh, Dick Theodory, yes, he is.
Okay, and do we have any idea what kind of revenue he's bringing into Bridgeville? In regards to taxes and everything?
Um, we could up the property tax and the, uh, the other pieces. Joe Cower, I'm sure could get that for us.
Because, I mean, you know, I honestly think that they probably do, do contribute to our financial, to our financial benefit, right?
Absolutely, Justin. They, they are a property tax source, they're a, a mercantile tax. Yes, they do. Um, the question is, would the values of the properties on New Street, Liberty Street, would that residential community increase in value if it didn't have a cement plant next to it?
Oh, well, I mean, I would think that would have to be taken into consideration. I think all models would have to be considered. So, all right, gotcha.
Mike?
Pat, you talking about what, building a whole new channel down through Silhalls?
Yes.
Like, I'm looking at this on Google Earth, I mean, and, and what John was talking about was basically a levee wall, uh, for the existing channel. Uh, I, I got a sneaking suspicion if you want to do a whole new channel down through Silhalls.
I can't hear you.
You're breaking up, Larry.
What I was saying is, I think if you're talking about a whole new channel down through Silhalls, it's probably going to cost three or four times what the levee wall is that John was talking about because that's a long distance. I mean, I mean, the only thing you really avoid is a commercial street bridge, frankly. And you've got a ninety-degree bend you got to make there, uh, kind of hard to, in my mind, to imagine that's going to be cheaper than what John's already talking about.
You got a, you got a, a high vertical slope right next, next to the railroad when you, once you get past the plant.
Right.
Re- re- remember that you eliminate the railroad bridge and the culvert. Both of them are eliminated.
Yeah, but I'm not hearing that those two are, are critical hydraulic structures. Are they, John?
No, those two aren't, those aren't the critical hydraulic structures now.
I don't think so.
The, the, the Bowery Hill Road Bridge is the only critical one, right? Again, I don't know, I don't have any engineering. That's why I was asking John if he took a look at it or what the thoughts were. And I guess Larry, you're telling me right now, you know.
I mean, you could run the numbers. I, I just think in suspicion, it's not going to be competitive at all.
Yeah, I think, I think the earthworks alone will be well over the cost of the others.
I mean, and I don't know how you would, I mean, just compensation for that property, that's going to be a lot of money.
Okay, I was, I was pulling back from the just compensation piece. My question to, to John was, what does the engineering look like? And to be honest with you, from my layman's point of view, it's, would you just, you know, dig it out a little bit and it just flows down through that property? I don't have any idea what the elevations are.
No.
Not an idea? Then scratch it off the list.
Okay. Mike?
I was, I was just going to say for as much money as we're proposing, you know, to look at something like that would, you know, would probably be, you know, you at least take a look at it, but, you know, Larry just answered our question, so.
Okay.
My point's moot.
I mean, I don't want to discourage John from doing the cost estimate, it's just that it's hard for me to imagine that's going to be cheaper than, basically, what is it, phase one, John? Is that what you called it?
Yeah. I just, I just ran a really stu- a stupid ballpark number just from the length. I took the length from the, from Bowery Hill Road to where it would, it would tie below the, the train trestle. It's, it's two, it's over two thousand feet. You go ten by twenty by two thousand, you're, you're looking at over ten thou- ten million dollars and just, just to move in, just to cut a channel, not to mention moving the hillside that has to be moved.
As compared to, what'd you say, three million?
Yeah.
Okay. Pat, you got anything else? I'm going to try and wrap this up. Uh, Joe, is there anybody else from the public out there? Good.
Not that I'm aware of, Dale.
Okay, um, thank you, John.
It's not a problem.
Um, to, to address, uh, old business, I guess I would take a motion to, uh, table the three items that we have for old business until the, uh, November, December meeting.
A second.
I, I have a question before you do that. The chicken keeping, what's, what's the status of that?
Um, Joe distributed a draft of the ordinance.
Oh.
Um, last, last Thursday with, with all the other information for tonight's meeting.
It was all in the same packet, Larry.
All right, I'm going to have to go look because I completely missed that.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so I, I I would, I would take a motion to, uh, table all three of those issues.
One other question, if I can, Dale, before that, that motion gets made. So I think I saw, just keep me honest here, Joe, we've got, we've got our foot in the door for budget for twenty-one for the comprehensive plan, right? I think we went fifty percent of it.
Yes.
Okay, and then on the, the pedestrian safety, just want to make sure we don't lose a window here with twenty-one budget requests, uh, back to you, Dale. I know I missed last month, but anything that we need to get in with any sense of urgency, or are we good with the fifty percent on the plan? And that's what we're asking for this year.
Dale, I could, I could give an update if it's helpful.
Looks like we might have just lost Dale. He was frozen in time there for a second.
Uh, Tim, what's going on? We have a proposed budget that's, uh, already been circulated to the council finance committee that's, uh, balanced for next year without a tax increase. Uh, there is money in place for year one of a phased comprehensive plan, so twenty-five thousand dollars i- is penciled in the budget.
Okay.
Finance committee was okay with it. Council will have their first budget meeting on November second. So hopefully we'll, I'll have a concrete answer then, but right now, everything's looking very favorable. Uh, the signed budget within the Public Works Department was increased up to six thousand dollars. That does start phasing in some of the signage improvements for pedestrian signage, and we can even start doing some welcome signage. So it, it's a start.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
So pretty much everything that we've heard at planning commission meetings have been addressed throughout the year, uh, within the proposed budget.
Good. Sorry, my signal dropped out. I, I, I missed a lot of that, um.
We're good. I was just asking for anything that we need to get our, our requests in for budget for twenty-one. Are we good? Joe confirmed, uh, very succinctly that we are.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to, to table the old business until the the November, November, December meeting.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Go ahead.
Okay, Tim, Tim made the motion, Justin second, um, and this is to table the, the twenty-twenty-one budget, the chicken keeping and the pedestrian safety issues um, until next meeting. Um, any further discussion?
Um, Dale, this Joe Cower here.
Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, instead of having separate attachments for each one of these, uh, agenda items, the packet was one PDF file that had everything there. So just keep scrolling through the PDF and you'll see everything in order.
Right, right. But I, I would, I would motion to table the discussion and stuff till, till next meeting.
And then the only other thing before you vote on it, just as an update, that active Allegheny grant, uh, this has been talked around for a couple of months. The deadline to apply for that is middle of November, so it's going to be before your next meeting. Uh, I did prepare a grant application seeking money to do an active transportation plan uh, through that grant source. Uh, it will be on the council agenda because there's a resolution that needs adopted by council before we submit it. So hopefully when we come back at December, November, uh, that's going to be off your agenda and submitted, and hopefully we just wait to see if it was, how it's determined.
Is, is there anything that we need to do to take action on that tonight?
No, 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 everything, uh, you've guys been doing all year led up to that grant application. The, all, all those, uh, slides that went over the need for pedestrian safety and, uh, traffic mitigation work, uh, those were the footprints for that grant application. And, and they're being included with that application, including the, that report from the police chief on all the pedestrian accidents. So it, it basically, all the discussions we had this year, uh, were the foundation and it actually got put to work.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second to table the rest of the, the discussion of the old business till next meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, I'll take a, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Somebody want to make the motion?
Yeah, when you say I'll take, I think everybody thinks you're saying I will make, so.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
There you go.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, but signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you, Dale.
I, uh.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. I pronounce the meeting adjourned.